Going to order the July 22 meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. Um, I believe Mr. Eichels has taken role. Do we have any, uh, any old business or minutes? Has everybody reviewed the minutes of the previous meetings?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I believe that the July 8 minutes will be provided at a later date.
Thank you. Um, I understand that the agenda tonight, we're expecting a presentation. To introduce the Shoreline Management Plan. After which we will take some, uh, comments from the public. That correct?
Uh, yes, that, Mr. Chair, that's correct. Um, at the end of the meeting, we've, uh, reserved some time for folks to call in if they would like. Um, the number, the number to call is 360-293-1904. So, um, when we get to that agenda item, we can, uh, folks can call in and they can get into the queue to, to speak if they'd like.
Thank you, Ms. Graje. Um, are you doing your presentation this evening?
I am, thank you.
Go right ahead.
All right. Can everyone see my screen? Oh, not yet, huh? Can everyone see my screen?
Uh, I do not see a screen.
Okay, um.
Neither do I.
That's because I'm not sharing it. There we go. About now.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Please proceed.
What, whoops. Oh, shoot. Sorry, a bit of a technical difficulty, I need to reopen my presentation, so please bear with me. All right. Sorry about that. Um, so hello and welcome to everyone, thank you for attending, uh, one of our very first virtual Planning Commission meetings. It's pretty exciting. My name is Libby Graje and I'm the Planning Manager for the City of Anacortes Planning Community and Economic Development Department. And tonight, we'll be introducing the Shoreline Master Program, uh, periodic update process and draft proposed amendments, uh, to the, with the Planning Commission. Uh, just some information about, um, where project information is available. So to encourage in early and continuous public participation, we've created a webpage. Um, and, and you can see the, uh, URL and the link in this slide. Uh, the page includes draft documents and staff reports, public notices and other project information. And we, we will be updating that website frequently to ensure that, uh, the public has, um, uh, timely access to the, uh, updated information. Um, another good way to stay informed about the project's process is to sign up or subscribe to our Newsflash, um, e-mail mailing list. And you can get there by going to the city's, City of Anacortes website and clicking on the notify me feature. And then subscribing to the SMP periodic update, um, Newsflash email list. So we'll be sending out, uh, public hearing, public meeting notices and other project information, uh, using that tool. So the purpose of tonight's meeting, as I mentioned, is to introduce to the Planning Commission the Shoreline Master Program periodic update and draft amendments. And to answer questions and gather feedback for use in finalizing the draft amendments for a formal public comment period and a public hearing. And we'll do that by going through some background and context information. We'll show a video that was prepared by the Watershed Company, which provides a, a good overview of the Shoreline Master Program itself, the periodic update requirements. And, uh, talks about, um, some of the key proposed amendments. Then the plan is to open it up for discussion with the Planning Commission members. Um, questions and discussion about the process, about the proposed amendments, et cetera. And then finally, um, we would invite members of the public that would like to provide informal comments and feedback, uh, to call in, 360-293-1904. And just to note that, um, a formal public comment period and a public hearing will be advertised in the coming months. So if members of the public would like to call in and provide some informal comment tonight, that's great. Um, but also please, please know that, um, there will be a formal public comment period advertised, uh, in the next couple of months and also a public hearing.
Is the public, uh, tuned into this right now? Have they, have they joined us at, at, at six o'clock when we started?
The, this meeting is being broad streamed live from the city's website and also Channel 10, the local channel. And I do, I do know a couple of people called earlier asking how to get to the meeting, so I hope they were able to, to view the meeting this evening. The individuals working on this project, project team includes, uh, the Watershed Company staff and city staff. The Watershed Company, um, is the same consulting firm that assisted the city with the 2010 Shoreline Master Program Comprehensive Update. Um, and they are also assisting numerous other Puget Sound jurisdictions with their periodic update review processes. Um, so they're really gonna provide some, uh, really great experience and expertise to our Shoreline Master Program periodic update process. Um, and on tonight's meeting, you may have noticed, we have Alex Capron and Dan Nickel. And, uh, they're from the Watershed Company and they are going to be available to answer questions and share their expertise on, um, some of the items that come up during their discussion. City staff working on the project include myself and the project manager and the, and the project contact. And then of course, we have, um, Don Meesimer and Tess Cooper, um, who are also integral parts of the project team. So first I thought it might be helpful to provide a little bit of, um, background and context. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the, um, initial timeline that we, we thought this project was going to take has been impacted. Uh, you may recall back in, um, March, we had to cancel the second open house that we had scheduled and we instead did a, um, online, um, open house. Uh, due to limitations on in-person public meetings. So, uh, just wanted to kind of provide some overview information to get everybody oriented again before I turn it over for the video presentation, which will delve into more of the specifics of the update. So this is an overview of the Shoreline Management Act. It was passed by the Washington State Legislature in 1971 and adopted by voters in 1972. Its overarching goal is to prevent the inherent harm in an uncoordinated and piecemeal development of the state's shorelines. The statute requires cities and counties to develop and implement Shoreline Master Programs and a permit system for administering their Shoreline Master Program. The Washington State Department of Ecology is responsible for developing guidance and supporting jurisdictions in the development of Shoreline Master Programs and periodic updates. And ultimately, the Department of Ecology will review the Shoreline Master Programs to ensure, ensure compliance with the Shoreline Management Act. And then another role that Ecology has is reviewing and making final decisions on shoreline conditional use permits and shoreline variances after the local approval and appeal processes have completed. Um, and I just wanted to note that the project team has been in frequent contact with the Shoreline staff at the Department of Ecology throughout the, um, process so far and the, uh, development of the proposed draft amendment. And, um, that close coordination with Ecology is really, uh, an important part of the joint review pro- process that the city is utilizing. Which allows for the joint, um, Ecology and the local comment period and joint public hearing. So this is just a little, um, overview of the Anacortes Shoreline Master Program legislative his- history. So Anacortes adopted its first Shoreline Master Program in 1977. There were major updates in 1983, 2001, and then most recently in 2010. And the 2010 update was a comprehensive update. Um, that resulted in a shoreline inventory and characterization and a cum- and cumulative impacts reports that helped establish the ecological baseline against which new development is reviewed. The current update that we are working on right now is, uh, much more limited in scope than the one we did in 2010. And it mostly focuses on updates that are needed, uh, for consistency with new legislation that's been passed by the, um, legislature since the last periodic update. Um, to, to make sure that our, uh, SMP is consistent with the comprehensive plan and our new development regulations. And also to address local circumstances and improve clarity of the regulations. So the, the permitting system that I mentioned is one of the ways that the Shoreline Master Program is administered by the city. All developments that's located within shoreline jurisdiction, which is, uh, waters of the state and lands within 200 feet of the ordinary high watermark. So all development located within shoreline jurisdiction is required to conform to the Shoreline Management Act and the Shoreline Master Program. And this list shows what our, uh, local permit processing looks like. The type of shoreline permit that one would need for development along the shoreline depends on the shoreline environment designation of the property where the project will take place. The type of development and use that is proposed and the valuation of the, of the project. And then the review procedure for each type of permit is based on Table 1920-030 of our Anac- Anacortes Municipal Code. That, um, goes through and talks about, uh, which decision-making body is responsible for making decisions on permit sites. So certain types of development that don't meet the threshold for substantial development are exempt from having to, um, obtain a shoreline substantial development permit. So there we're talking about a letter of exemption. Um, exemptions are still subject to and reviewed for conformance with all applicable Shoreline Master Program re- regulations through the exemption review process. And, uh, this right here, type one means that it's a type one review process and that is an administrative process. With the, the directors, the decision maker on that, on those. Um, some examples of projects that might get a letter of exemption include, um, repair and maintenance projects, if somebody needs to repair a dock. Um, a new single-family residence, uh, that's being built by a, a property owner. Um, or maintenance of an existing, uh, bulkhead. So, so mostly real minor, um, projects that aren't likely to have, uh, environmental impacts. Um, shoreline substantial development permits are the next type of permit. And those go through a public review process, including a pre-application, neighborhood meeting, comment period, public hearing, and then ultimately a decision by the decision maker. And the Planning Commission is the hearing body and decision maker for most types of shoreline substantial development permits. Um, and that's what that type three PC means here. Uh, some shoreline permits go to the city council if they exceed, I think it's a million dollars in project valuation or if they're larger than three acres in size. And then finally, shoreline conditional use permits and shoreline variances are also, uh, Planning Commission, uh, review process types. But those also require a decision by the Department of Ecology. So after Anacortes has finished its, um, review process and any appeals, local appeals that are available, then Ecology gets those permits, reviews them and makes a, a decision. And then I just listed out, you know, that most of the shoreline permit types that we have in Anacortes have local appeals available. And after the, the local decision is made and the appeal period is over, all permits get sent to the Department of Ecology. Um, and then one can appeal the permit to the Shoreline Hearings Board within 21 days. So quite a, quite a lengthy process for most of the, those shoreline permit types. Uh, just an overview of project milestones to date. So we started the periodic update process back in around July 2019, so about a year ago, I guess. Um, and that is when the city, uh, entered into a contract with the Watershed Company to assist with periodic update. In October of 2019, there was a public open house, uh, which I think many of you Planning Commission members may have attended. In 2019, the, uh, city entered into a grant funding agreement with the Department of Ecology, so the city gets a little bit of money to help with this process. Um, in March of 2020, the gap analysis, which is the document that, um, goes through and looks at, uh, changes in the legislature, uh, in the legislation, um, in the Shoreline Management Act. Um, and also identifies mandatory changes that need to be made and looks at, um, you know, whether any changes have occurred that, over the last 10 years since the last update locally, uh, that warrant changing the, the master program. In March 2020, uh, so those, so those documents and the proposed amendments resulting have been on the website since March 2020 for public review. Um, then we had a, a open house that was conducted online, as I mentioned, because of the COVID, uh, pandemic. So, um, we asked Watershed Company to create a video that sort of did a, a nice overview of the update process and went, walked through the proposed amendments. And so that video has been on the website, but we wanted to show it this evening too, just to get, um, because it's well done and it has all of the information that we need. And then tonight, that brings us to tonight, July 22nd, and we're having our Planning Commission workshop. So just a quick overview of the next steps. We'll be looking at finalizing the draft proposed amendments for public comment after tonight. Advertising the joint public comment period, which is a 30-day public comment period and holding public, a public hearing. We'll be issuing the SEPA determination and ultimately, uh, the Planning Commission will issue a recommendation to city council on the periodic updates. Um, and we're, at this point, we're targeting fall/winter timeframe for when that may occur. Okay, so now we are to the video presentation and as I mentioned, it was recorded for the second open house. Um, there are some references to some outdated timeline information which has changed since, you know, COVID. And so we'll go over a little bit more detailed timeline after the video. So let me figure out if I can play that. Does anybody have any questions before I start playing that? No? Okay.
Hello, uh, my name is Don Alex Capron with Watershed Company. Uh, welcome to the City of Anacortes Shoreline Master Program Periodic Update. This is a second open house for the online variety. We'll be discussing, um, some of the draft amendments as a general overview. And, uh, really to start, uh, what is a Shoreline Master Program? So with background again, for those who have, uh, attended the first open house. It is, uh, set on a standard of, um, three principles. One, environmental resource protection of, uh, the shoreline environment. Landward and waterward as well as kind of also to promote public access. And, uh, encourage water-dependent uses of shoreline as a priority use. Also, uh, a listed priority use under a single-family residential use. So the city comprehensively updated its SMP in 2010 and the permit procedures are referenced in Anacortes Municipal Code, Section 18-16. So this is a, currently a standalone regulatory document. And citywide, uh, Shoreline Master Programs exist in what are called shorelines of the state. So these shoreline environment designations are on marine shorelines, also associated lessons and lakes that are greater than 20 acres. 20 acres or greater. Now what, uh, isn't included in Anacortes are any streams or rivers that are greater than 20 cubic feet per second mean annual flow. So that's what thresholds for stream river, um, as a shoreline state. So these, uh, shoreline environment designations are essentially like an overlay in addition to the zoning code that for special, uh, uses and development standards have backed. So periodic update, um, is required by the Department of Ecology to keep, uh, SMPs consistent with state law, uh, local plans and regula- regulations. And any, uh, new and improved best available science and information. Some of that is being captured in this, uh, critical areas update that I'll talk a little bit more about, uh, later on. So the periodic update won't go back to the ecological baseline that was used during the initial inventory and characterization. Uh, of, of the shoreline environmental resources. And it also will not assess developments that have taken place, uh, to really protect that known at loss of shoreline ecological function. So that's, I mean, that's a premise for the SMP. This, uh, periodic update is, uh, a little narrow in scope in that respect. What it does give, uh, cities opportunity, or City of Anacortes an opportunity, uh, to do is to, uh, look at what's working, what isn't, what can be improved to help with this, with this frame of mind of, of the known at loss. The gap analysis report, uh, that we've prepared looks at the state legislative amendments, there are about 27 of them. Um, nearly a third of those we could go ahead and incorporate into the SMP. Overlooking at critical area regulations, so the city is currently updating the critical areas code and how that dovetails with the SMP. As a, as a separate regulatory framework. Changes to the comprehensive plan and development regulations for the Title 19 zoning code update. And then any additional issues that city staff or Watershed Company have identified. So with legislative amendments, this really has, has to do with, uh, updating definitions, the definition of development not to include dismantling of structures. Aquaculture, uh, activities do not include, uh, gully duck harvesting. With exemptions, this includes the updating the cost threshold, uh, for replacing a single-family pier. So that is, is really the difference between applying for shoreline exemption or shoreline substantial development permit. And then adding other cross-references to the Washington Highway Code to help spell out where different exemptions may occur or different permit processes would occur at the state level within the SMP. So we looked, um, real closely at the vegetation conservation standards, uh, within the City of Anacortes. So that, you know, this is a kind of a, a dual-purpose, um, co- code amendment. One, it is to provide more clarity for homeowners that are looking to preserve existing views, also preserving, uh, vegetation along the shoreline to the, to the greatest possible extent. So, uh, we're creating a standard to retain 75% of the tree's crown when doing pruning activities for view preservation. And, uh, a shoreline exemption that's required for trimming, so it helps the city document that where, where change is taking place. And then potentially a shoreline substantial development permit for some positions. So this includes, uh, an asphalt photo, tree and post activity. And, uh, yeah, looking at hand-operated versus, uh, ground-based motorized clearing. So when clearing is approved for development, it includes, and includes hand-operated to the applicant's hands so that their own vegetation conservation replanting. Gives, uh, an incentive for a lower impact, uh, technique. The proposed SMP amendments that we have evaluated, some of the first being, uh, so this is, yeah, citywide. The ship harbor change proposed, that's changing the urban shoreline environment designation to a split between conservancy and shoreline residential. So this is to continually the existing land use. On the other hand, with canneries, now there is an existing zoning designation of commercial for those canneries. So we believe that the urban designation is a suitable designation for those, um, for the time being. And we do recognize that shoreline residential is adjacent to those uses, um, given the size of the structures and, and, and the encouragement of, of that use that those could remain. Now, uh, lake Erie, so a really small change, just to recognize that there's a single-family residence that is there that is, should be consistent with the conservancy designation that allows single-family use as long as it's 100 feet from the shoreline. So that was a, a small change there. And this is more of a mapping, mapping amendment just to be consistent with what the code is saying, but all aquatic designations need to be shown waterward or. That map change that represents the code. So with, uh, aquaculture, uh, this is something, yeah, the city and Watershed staff are considering a, a change to the aquatic designation. So currently, right now, it's a shoreline conditional use permit in, in the, uh, permit designation. So it'd be proposed to have a shoreline conditional use in the aquatic as well. And this would be really prescriptive. Now, it wouldn't allow for net pens or any in-water aquaculture, really be above water. This would be focusing on low-impact aquaculture techniques. So it'd still have, you know, a high wa- water quality and really minimal impacts. And that would need to be demonstrated in the criteria that we've listed out. And this, this would still be something that Ecology would get final review over, uh, and it would, it would have a hearing and the like. So it would have a very involved public process in any shoreline conditional use permit that has come to be. But it would encourage what the But it would encourage, what this would do is it would provide economic vitality to structures that are underutilized right now along the shoreline. Minimize the visual impact by having the activity take place within the structure. With critical areas, so currently the SMP has a separate standalone document for critical area regulations that's outdated. So we would adopt by ordinance the critical areas that are currently under review. Now, we would exempt some activities that are normally permitted in critical areas. Regulations that are under consideration. For any critical area alteration, any shoreline or any vegetation modifications, trimming and that. I would have to go through SMP review and those sections in the critical areas code would be admitted. So that's to encourage the shoreline ecology law, which is the basis for the SMP itself. With building height and use, so the SMP generally allows up to thirty-five feet. That is the height limit. Now, there are downtown areas where the zoning code allows a higher height limit. And yeah, we have a reference for view corridor documentation. So that's showing basically a perspective drawing that would demonstrate that if the buildings were put in, that views or outlying structures would still be preserved. We've also referenced the SMP commercial development standard that now provides for the city blocks under standards updating the SMP code references to capture Title nineteen. And yeah, the building height and calculation. So that is really capturing the definitions in the Title nineteen update and also adding to the exemption that are currently listed in the SMP. So it's really elevating those to the SMP for activities that occur since the shoreline environment designations would spell that out in the development application. And yeah, once we are, once we get through this process and reviewing the SMP amendments in the standalone documents, the SMP itself will be codified as Title eighteen. So without a lot of duplicate definitions will be. So anything that's more specific to the SMP, that'll be noted. You know, goes back to anything that's more, has a stronger constraint or some regulatory framework, that would be the definition that goes forward. But a lot of the definitions in the SMP will go away as it goes into Title eighteen. So with dock and pier repair, it wasn't really clear what substructure means. So we added the definition, structure as it relates to composite elements. And it doesn't include the pier pile. So when you're replacing a dock or pier, it's fifty percent of the dock or pier. That's really the threshold for, you know, maintenance activity that's shoreline exemption versus the shoreline substantial development permit. So now it's clear that it doesn't include the pier pile and that repair activity. So we also added clarity to shoreline and shoreline residential and conservancy impervious surface standards. So now we're using a whole lot of steps for the critical areas themselves and calculating impervious surface areas before it wasn't really clear. And then, yeah, that's for new development applications. So there aren't really impervious surface standards now in the zone code. It's kind of a, that's an existing regulation in the SMP that had been difficult in the past to administer. So we're, yeah, providing that clarity. So as a part of our update, we've provided a memo, basically a typical memo that has updated the twenty ten restoration plan to, you know, just show restoration projects that have been added, those that have been completed, and then created a very simple methodology for prioritizing future restoration activities. So looking at the ecological value and cost thinking system. So anything with the lowest costs and highest values get the highest possible score. And the actually conservation use of strategic areas along the shoreline. And then another one that was a little, a little bit lower on that was still a higher value site. Would be the St. Jose site, which is, for those who are mentioned. But, you know, we really ranked all restoration projects and their value that's available for public view. And then a future activity is also to review the SMP cumulative impacts analysis against future city work that's anticipated within shoreline jurisdiction. So that would be an agenda that has yet to occur, but will still occur prior to this SFP. All right, so here we are with our timeline. And so the next spot would be Planning Commission Workshop, which will happen hopefully before the joint ecology and city public hearing. Now, this is all based loosely around the development of COVID nineteen. So, you know, that's all still to be written in stone. But the joint ecology and city public hearing, this is a process that's different than the comprehensive update where ecology reviews a locally approved document made during changes. So ecology would be making their suggestions and initial determination after the joint public hearing and common period occurred. So it really creates deficiencies where ecology's review will be captured in another plan review recommendation after the public hearing. So it'll be a separate step for planning commission to then weigh in on changes that ecology has made at the SMP. So yeah, the schedule is in flux, but this is at least anticipated moving forward. And there's the website there. Thank you for listening.
Okay. Thank you, Alex. So just to finish up here, I said that we'd go into a little bit more detail with the proposed timeline moving forward. And so on your screen, you've got the proposed tentative schedule for the SMP update. And we've put it here with the critical areas regulations update. And that is because the, as mentioned in Alex's presentation, the shoreline master program update plans to adopt or incorporate by reference the critical areas regulations once that update is completed. And so that process needs to finish first before adopting the shoreline master program updates. And so as you can see, I did these little yellow blotches here to show where we are in each process. The Planning Commission has already looked at the critical areas regulations and made a recommendation to city council. City council is looking to pick up the review of the Planning Commission's recommendations here in August. So that process will begin again very soon. And here we are for the shoreline master program update at the Planning Commission Workshop. So still quite a few steps, as you can see here, to get to an adopted. Sorry about that. So that's a tentative schedule. And after we get feedback tonight, we'll look at finalizing the schedule and publishing that on the project webpage here in the next couple of days. So folks can know what to anticipate. And just one more thing I wanted to hit on, it was touched on briefly in Alex's presentation. But as mentioned, we're looking at codification of the shoreline master program development regulations. And what that means is that those would move over to Title nineteen, which is our unified development code. And then we've also started to kind of map out where some of the other pieces of the existing shoreline master management program would, sorry, shoreline master program would go. So there are goals and policies within that document, within the SMP that don't really belong in the development regulations. So what we're thinking about there is to add a shoreline element to our comprehensive plan and move those goals and policies over to our comprehensive plan. And then the development regulations we talked about. There are some administrative provisions kind of scattered throughout the code currently in Title eighteen and nineteen twenty. So we'd look to sort of consolidate those into one location in our unified development code. And then, of course, definitions, looking at whether those should be within the new development regulations in Title nineteen under the shoreline master program section or in the overall definitions for Title nineteen. So still some things to think about and look at what might work best and be most straightforward for people that need to use these documents. Well, and that looks like, that concludes the PowerPoint presentation. So at this point, I'd like to invite questions and feedback from the commission. And please remember to unmute yourself before you speak.
Do any of the commissioners have questions or comments?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Mount.
When is the comprehensive revision of the shoreline management plan scheduled for?
The next comprehensive update?
Yes. Is there a legal requirement for that?
I don't know that there is yet. Dan, do you have a response?
Yeah, I may be able to weigh in there. I, there actually is no legal requirement for the next comprehensive update. All that the state has provided is that we periodically, every eight years, go back in and update to make sure that our documents are consistent with the state law. But my guess is that, you know, in another eight years, there's going to be pressure from various entities to really do another comprehensive update. So I would not be surprised. But part of that's going to rely on, you know, state budgets and where we're at.
Are there any other questions or comments from the commission members? Hearing nothing.
I wanted to ask about the height and how that corresponds to the different zoning. You said there's a height. Is that a change, the thirty-five feet from previous? And how does that differ if you're shoreline in a residential zone versus a commercial zone? Just for clarity, because I know that's always a big, it's always going to get people worried.
Yeah, I can chime in there a little bit. Yeah, so really getting some of the zoning regulations in the SMP so there isn't any conflict with the, between the SMP and zoning. There are some height allowances above thirty-five feet. So typically thirty-five feet is the cap that, you know, the Shoreline Management Act at the state level allows. You know, within the City of Anacortes, there are some downtown areas where it goes above that height. So you apply that to the poles up there. There is additional view corridor documentation that we've added. So there is a WAC provision that allows for that. But yeah, we're, there's kind of some harmonization with the development regulation definition of height and now the SMP height regulations. So that, yeah, they're not conflicting with each other.
Mr. Reesmer, are you?
Unmute yourself, please. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, Alex, as he's talking about that, you know, this hasn't changed. This is really for clarity. In the past, there have been folks who have proposed buildings in certain areas. And it's like Alex said, mostly around the downtown and the eastern shoreline. That they have to have.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. To enable audio control, please enter. Muted. Unmuted.
Mitchell, are you able to hear me now?
Yeah, we're back up and running.
Thank you, Tom. There are no current, there are certainly no public calls also.
Thank you.
Lady, I had a question. Are we going to go through each of the proposed changes or amendments, if you will, and discuss them in terms of historical content? For example, the tree trimming, there's got to be some driver for changing those things. So is there going to be a dialogue about what drove the amendments, what the rationale is for?
Yes, certainly, we can, we can talk about that right now. I guess if the commission would like to go through amendment by amendment, we could do that too. It's kind of, what do you have questions on and we can address them.
If I can make a suggestion, is there, during the review of zoning, we went through section by section. And covered each one in some detail. Is the plan to do so with this revision here?
We can certainly do that. And we could, well, we might, Mr. Meesmer.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So yes, I think that would be an appropriate method of moving forward in this process is to break it up into sections. So that the commissioners can understand each of the sections. And then what those amendments are proposed and how we got there to those amendments. So I think with the schedule that we're putting together over the next month, we can break that all down. And at a future commissioners meeting, we can talk more about that, how that's going to look.
Are the commissioners comfortable with that approach?
I am, yes.
Okay. I also wanted to point out that we have received some written comments already. I recall five emails or five documents that were emailed to the commission. And I assume that that will be an ongoing process so that people are assured that the commission has seen whatever documents have been submitted during, during our review period. Impired to the public meeting, the public hearing.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair. So the, you're right, we have received some comments. The formal comment period has not begun, though any comments that do come in, we'll make sure the commissioners do have them. It will probably be, as Libby mentioned, sometime in fall, early winter, before we actually open up the formal comment period. And you'll receive at that time, I'm sure, many more comments and writing. And when we have the public hearing, I'm sure that folks will be calling in and commenting as well. But and as we move forward, we will address each of the comments through the joint process with the Department of Ecology and with our consultants.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. Ms. Grages, do you have anything more to present today?
I don't.
And is there, are there any calls at this time waiting to be heard?
Currently, there are no other calls.
Any last comments by commission members? If not, I propose that we close the meeting. Are any objections? Hearing none, we will terminate the meeting and after we determine the next meeting date.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, commissioners.